Both way, march! March, Tam, march! Color guide, up! Left, face!
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Taylor, fellow citizens of Baton Rouge. It is my honor and the privilege to introduce a great American. She's a senior at Broadmoor High School and will soon complete her four years in ROTC. She is the winner of the EBR Cadet of the Year Board for Four-Year Cadets. She is a class president, a member of the Honor Society, student government, dance team, and the Beta Club. She has a grade point average of 3.6 and a class ranking of 26 out of 252. She is a model cadet who has taken on the challenge of living up to cadet creed. Following graduation, she plans to attend University of Louisiana Lafayette and major in Business Administration. She is the daughter of Juvena Davis. Ladies and gentlemen, here to lead us in our pledge of allegiance, I present to you with great pride, Cadet Major Jonathan Mott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors! Right, face! Both way, march!
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of the employees, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, secretaries, paraprofessionals, everyone who works for the school district, to each of our nine board members, first of all, congratulations. Secondly, thank you for taking on this awesome task of public service. There is no greater responsibility than you can have than to work on behalf of children. And to have their futures literally decided sometimes by the decisions that you make makes your task not only a difficult one, but one that has to be done with their hearts, their hands, and their heads as part of your deliberation process. You've taken on an awesome task, and each of you are certainly up to it. With the exception of Mr. Ballou, I've had the privilege of working with eight of you. And I know your passion, I know your intelligence, I know your commitment, I know your dedication, and I know your steadfastness about doing what's best for the school district, its students, and this community. So, the next, these next four years will probably be an adventure, and I'm sure it's going to be one that, at the end of the journey, you will have a lot to reflect on and be proud of, you have a lot that you wish you could do better, and there's some things that I'm sure you wish you will still be able to do. But to stand in a leadership role and to accept it with grace and with humility is what this work is about. So, congratulations to each of you, but to your families. And this is who we really have to extend our sincerest thanks to. Each of you knows that this is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year, no matter where you are in the community endeavor. So, when you're at the mall, when you're at church, when you're in the restroom, although kind of keep the conversation to a minimum in the restroom, because people do like to tell you a lot of their business in the restroom, which I don't get, but they do. But what I say to the families is, thank you for allowing them the space to do this work. Because you see them when people aren't so nice, and they don't say nice things, and they don't appreciate what they're doing. And when they're sad, when they're mad, and when they're shedding tears, you see that. And so, if it affects them, I know it affects you. So, to each family represented here, thank you as well. To the Ballous, there's still time. So, so, no. But, no, and I say that completely in jest. But what I'm saying to all of you is, thank you for allowing your mothers, your fathers, your husbands, your wives, your grandparents to be part of this journey. Because again, if you're not behind them, undergirding them, and making them feel that this is worthwhile because you believe it's worthwhile, then they can't do well. So, this is a happy time. We are going, there are a lot of people who are responsible for pulling this program together, but I would be most remiss in not thanking the students who are giving their time, the faculty who has supported them, and to two other people in particular who really have worked very hard, and that's Jamie Manda and Lynn West. So, I'd hope you all will join with me in giving all of these individuals a round of applause and thanking them for the job well done. And so, now, we're here for the reason that we're all here, and we're going to start the swearing-in of board members. But again, we hope you all have a good evening, we hope you'll stay and take part in the refreshments, and again, congratulations to each of our board members, and best of luck, best wishes in the upcoming year.
I know what you're thinking already, politician, I hope you're sure. But this is a special moment for all of us, and let me congratulate all of the school board members. But I just wanted to just make a couple of points. Number one, people are quick to criticize you as teachers and as school board administrators. People are slow to give credit to our children who are in public schools. And to make public schools sound like two bad words. But where would we be if it had not been for public schools? And a lot of us were very, very poor. But those teachers took us, and they taught us basics in life, and that's what we are doing now. People are quick to label schools as failing schools. And when we first passed that in the legislature, of course, I did not vote for it, but I was wondering what kind of psychological effect would it have on a child if you say that child is going to a failing school? And so, we have children now having to overcome obstacles that have been placed upon them by adults. But the other thing, and I see a lot of my colleagues here, but look at the fact that the legislature, and I'm a former legislator, so I will not plead guilty because I went to public schools. But how many rules and regulations are set up by people who do not look at the consequences of their actions and therefore handicap our children? And so, this is a tough road. A school teacher goes through a lot more today than what they went through when all of us were in school. But this is, when I say public schools, there's a call that goes out tonight for you to assist those in the administrative section of schools. There's a call that goes out to legislators and say, before you condemn those kids, let me show you some of the wonderful schools we have in our parish. There's a call that goes out to people who say, if you want to see good schools, come to East Baton Rouge Parish and look at how many schools have been selected as blue ribbon schools and all that we've done together. Yes, and I have to tell your parents, the teachers can't do it by themselves, they can't raise our children, it's a partnership. Tell the ministers, be active with the children who are in school who attend your church. And tell each of us that even if you don't believe it, we are an example. So, teach the kids and show them the beauty they possess inside. That's a very important part of us. So, with those remarks, this is a great night for some great people who have said, I have other options, but I'm concerned about our kids and our future, and that I choose to do whatever I can to make a difference. And each time you give a chance to give a child a hug, hug that child. Each time you get a chance to tell that child, "I love you," tell that child, "I love you." Each time you may have something extra, it may be an apple, offer it to that kid, because a lot of kids don't get any meal but lunch or breakfast. A lot of kids never hear the words, "I love you," and a lot of kids never have a hug from those parents. Thank you tonight to all of you for making this one of the greatest school systems in America. And I leave you with these words that comes from a preacher, George Truett. My challenge to you, to know the will of God is the greatest knowledge, to find the will of God is the greatest discovery, and to do the will of God is the greatest achievement. Let our children know they are second to no one. God bless each and every one of you, congratulations, and let's show them what Baton Rouge is made of, and show them some of the best kids anybody could be teaching or around, and who've made great successes in a lot of different fields, not just in Baton Rouge, but all over the world. God bless you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to start off by saying it's such an honor to be sitting up on this platform with all of these influential people in the community. I definitely did not know when my principal, Mr. Brister, asked me to speak tonight that I would be speaking right after the mayor, so I apologize if I'm, you know, not as good, but we'll see. When Mr. Brister asked me to speak tonight, I jumped at the chance to be able to offer all of our new board members some words of encouragement. I want to begin by saying thank you. The fact that you're even here today and you're willing to involve yourself in this community and to improve our school system just speaks volumes. And as an EBR student, I've been in the EBR school system my whole life. See, I'm nervous, I'm sorry. I've been in the school system my entire life, and I attribute so much of my academic success and my ambition to the people who have propelled me from the beginning. And those people that have contributed to this community and this school system are the reasons why so many of us students are becoming so successful today. And now, it's your turn to contribute to that success of other students in the future, although I'm a senior and I'll be graduating this year, and I won't get to, you know, necessarily reap all the benefits. It is so gratifying to me to be able to see that other adults, that you adults, that are taking action and wanting to improve this community for further generations. And it kind of warms my heart, because EBR is very near and dear to me, I have been here my entire life, and I do want to see this system continue to thrive and succeed as well as the students in it. I want to also say that you may not always feel appreciated, and I understand that, when you're facing these tasks, and, you know, the students that make up these school systems that you all are trying so hard to improve may never thank you personally, they may never have the opportunity to do so, they may never do it properly. So, I am so pleased that I was given the opportunity to tell you formally, all of you, thank you so much for everything that you do and are willing to do and will do for the future of this community, and I just wish you the best of luck, and thank you so much for having me.
I just want to start off by saying I'm very honored to be here. This is definitely a bigger turnout than I thought it would be, which is wonderful. I have three children, and all three are in public schools. My youngest, I'm so nervous, my youngest goes to Shenandoah Elementary. My middle school child is at Sherwood, and my oldest is at Baton Rouge High. So, I have two very hard-working children to get into the magnet program, and I am a strong believer in that program. And I love that my kids can go to a public school and get such a great education. I also believe that as a parent, my job is not only to teach them at home, but to support the teachers to be able to teach them at school. If the teachers are running copies, they're not very well teaching my child math, so I try to be there as much as possible. I also think it's important for the teachers to know my face, because I want them to be able to call me and tell me, "Let me tell you what Jack did at school today," and not wonder, "Well, I wonder what Jack's mom may do that at home?" No, I want to be a very big influential part of my child's entire life, and they spend more time at school than they do at home. So, I want to be sure that I know everything that's going on at school, I want to know who they're hanging around, I want to know what the teachers are teaching them, I want to know when they come home and they say, "Miss Johnson said we don't have to do that." And I can say, "I know for a fact I know Miss Johnson, and Miss Johnson did not say that," because I want to be able to say, "I know Miss Johnson." So, I try to be at the school as much as possible. Luckily, I have a job that is very lenient with my schedule, and I recently have fallen into that job in the last few years. When my oldest was in elementary school, I didn't have that luxury, so I couldn't be at the school as much, but I was there as much as possible. I was the copy mom, and I couldn't even be the copy mom full-time. I had to recruit two other copy moms, and we had to split it up and I had to make a schedule, and I would have to text them and tell them, "It's your day, you better, you know, get to the school." So, it doesn't take a lot of time to volunteer, and my kids love seeing me at the school. And I have kids that will come up to me and hug me at Walmart and tell me, "Oh, Miss Jack's mama, we had such a good day today." And I love that the kids know me, and I love that I know my kids' friends, because then I can tell them, "No, you cannot hang around with that little boy, because I see what he does at recess." So, I think it's very important that people get involved and volunteer at the school, not just to help the school, to help your child. Because these teachers cannot teach your children if they're too busy running copies or hanging bulletin boards. So, I guess that's it.
Mr. Mark Ballou escorted by Cadet First Lieutenant Paul Ek Kromer from Broadmoor High School. Come on up.
All the residents of District One did me a tremendous honor by allowing me to represent them on the school board. Looking forward to the next four years. I know I've met all of the members of the board, and they all want very much what's best for the students and the rest of the community, and I guarantee you, over the next four years, you'll see a very professional board, very committed board, and a hard-working board. If we're not there on the first day, I won't stop trying, I know that. Thank you.
I, Mark Ballou.
I, Mark Ballou.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the laws of the Constitution and the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and...
Impartially discharge.
Impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations, Mark.
Veretta Lee escorted by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jill Lewis from Glen Oaks High School. Please bring up whoever you'd like.
I want to say good evening to everyone, and thank you for the large turnout. Thank you for all my family, friends that came out to share this event with me. I see most of everybody that I invited, and Senator, I mean, I'm sorry, Representative Barrow texted me a few minutes ago, her godchild is ill, and she wasn't able to make it, but she sent her best wishes, and I really appreciate that. So, at this time, I want to bring my love, my grandchildren, up to hold this vow.
I, Verita Lee.
I, Verita Lee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent.
Incumbent.
On me.
On me.
As.
As.
East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the power invested in me by the state of Louisiana, I install you as board member for East Baton Rouge Parish. Congratulations.
Want to go to District Three now, Mrs. Doctor Kenyetta Nelson Smith escorted by Cadet Captain Michael Owens from Scottlenville Magnet High School.
I didn't watch the board meetings, though I'm not a very big conker, so of course, these last four years was very hard, but it was well-deserved of my time, of my energy fighting for our children. And so, this next four years, I plan to do the exact same thing, fight harder, fight a little bit longer for our students in EBR. I'm a product of EBR, absolutely love the system, I believe wholeheartedly in the system, so I plan to fight for those that are in there so that they have the same opportunities that I had coming through EBR. So, at this time, I'd like to ask my mother to come up.
I, Dr. Kenyetta Nelson Smith.
I, Dr. Kenyetta Nelson Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge.
Discharge.
And perform.
And perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As.
As.
East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the power invested in me by this great state of Louisiana, I install you as board member. Congratulations.
District Four now, Tarver Smith escorted by Cadet Major Sarah Anderson from Bel Air High School.
But I want to thank everybody, number one, for being in my district. This is District Four, the citizens of District Four for sending me back for my full third term, this is actually my fourth term, because I took over for former President Jackie Mims. I'm going to invite my wife, Allison Klein Peter Smith, to the stand, and my mother, Maryanne Smith. I'm going to introduce my father, Thomas Earl Smith, and my stepson, Spencer Klein Peter, if you all would just stand in place. And before the Honorable Judge swears me in, I just want to say, for those of you all who watch the school board meetings and say, "Golly, Smith, you run your mouth too much," or, "We got the point, why are you fighting so hard?" It's because of this lady right here, a former employee of East Baton Rouge Parish School System. That, if there are any teachers in here or teachers who are watching or who might see this, that's why I fight so hard, for the interests of all kids, and because of this lady right here who reared me right. Thank you.
I, Tarver Smith.
I, Tarver Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge.
Discharge.
And perform.
And perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And by the authority and the power invested in me by the great state of Louisiana, I install you as board member. Congratulations.
District Five now, Evelyn Ware Jackson escorted by her daughter, Cadet Second Lieutenant Lena Jackson from McKinley High School.
It's so great to see everybody here this evening, and especially my family, I just appreciate you so much, and my friends, you've been the wind underneath my wings, and I just couldn't do anything without you. And I want to ask my daughter, Victoria, to come up here as well and stand with us as we take the oath. It's been a wonderful four years, and I'm looking forward to another great ride in the journey of becoming one of the top ten, one of the top ten schools in our district. We've got a long way to go, but it's a very short time, so we will be rapidly improving, and I appreciate all the input from everybody that I've spoken to over the last few months in District Five and all across town. We are going to be the next great city, and it's because of the education that our kids are getting in EBR and the products that we are producing in EBR. We are one of the finest, and we will continue to grow. We are one of the finest and we will continue to grow.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Evelyn Ware Jackson.
I, Evelyn Ware Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
With the power vested in me by the state of Louisiana, as judge retired, I install you as school board member of East Baton Rouge Parish.
District Six now. Jill Dyson, escorted up here by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Dakota Whitaker.
Thank you.
From Woodlawn High School.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. You know, I find myself really excited this time. I've realized that this is the sixth time that I've been sworn in as your East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member. And it really makes me very proud. I appreciate the broad-based support that has come out for this school board and I'm really looking forward to our new board working together and all that we intend to accomplish. I'm really looking forward to a new day. And this is one of the most exciting times that I've had standing up here ready to have my administrator to me. And I very much appreciate all of my friends, all of the business community, and everyone of the faith-based community and everyone that has come out to help this board make a difference. And I just appreciate all of you. Thank you.
I, repeat after me. I.
I.
Said your name.
Jill Dyson.
Do swear.
Do swear.
Sowlandly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will.
Support the Constitution and laws.
The laws and Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Louisiana.
And the state of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The mayor said I have no power or authority, but I can use his.
From District Seven, Barbara Freiberg, escorted up by Cadet First Lieutenant Emma Johnson from Lee High School.
I don't think I got the message that we were supposed to speak tonight. I don't think there was a message. First of all, when I look out there tonight, I see many, many family and friends and governmental officials, school supporters, school workers. And I say to you, without all of you, we couldn't do our job. You are so important to what we do each and every day. And actually, I was going to use the same line that Evelyn used. You are indeed, all of you, the wind beneath our wings. And we appreciate and are thankful for everything you all do every day. I am honored today to have my brother from New Orleans to swear me in, and I'd like my husband to come up.
I, Barbara Freiberg.
I, Barbara Freiberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the laws of this state and the Constitution and laws of this state.
Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the power vested in me, I understand I have it now. I'm proud to induct you as a chairman.
From District Eight, Connie Bernard, escorted up by Cadet Second Lieutenant Joseph Allehu from Northeast High School.
Again, I didn't know there was a speech tonight, but mostly I want to thank my number one campaign manager, my husband, because I wouldn't be back here tonight if he hadn't been here with me for the last four and a half months. And I want to thank my family, my friends, and everyone in Baton Rouge for giving me another term. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hello, everybody. I, Connie Bernard.
I, Connie Bernard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state of Louisiana.
Of this state of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. By the power vested in me, I'm now for now to school board again.
From District Nine, Mr. David Tappman, escorted by Cadet Captain Leslie Lopez from Terra High School.
Thank you, Matt. I'd like to invite my family to join me on the stage, please. And while they're here, I just, I would say to you that I'm honored to serve on this board. Great communities are based in great school systems. And when I look at the collective energy, the collective knowledge, the collective influence that we have up here on this stage and throughout this room, I'm inspired. And I'm also inspired by the people who really make it happen every day. And that's the administrators, the principals, the teachers who are on the front line of education, the ones who are there fighting for our kids. And that's what I plan to do for the next four years. I'm also inspired by all the people who are not necessarily here today, our legislators who are out there fighting for us. There are several here, people who work in the community every day to provide solid programs for children, to help them grow and to become productive members of society and strong members of our community. I want to thank you for this opportunity and I can promise you that over the next four years, I will give every bit of energy to trying to continue the work that we have done and build this system to be a world-class system. I want to introduce my mom, Miss Ethel McGovern, my son, David Tappman Jr., the good-looking one in the family, and my wife, Maria.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, David Tappman. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Louisiana.
And the state of Louisiana.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
As East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Um de le le, um de la. Um de le le, um de la. He traveled all around the world and everywhere he went. He used his word and always said it goes a clever jig. When nukes in my horizon pass a time with me. I say me special word and then they ask me how to see. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Super Cala Fragilistic. Super Cala Fragilistic. Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Um de le le, um de la. Um de le le, um de la. He traveled all around the world and everywhere he went. He used his word and always said it goes a clever jig. When nukes in my horizon pass a time with me. I say me special word and then they ask me how to see. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Super Cala Fragilistic. Super Cala Fragilistic. Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Um de le le, um de la. Um de le le, um de la. He traveled all around the world and everywhere he went. He used his word and always said it goes a clever jig. When nukes in my horizon pass a time with me. I say me special word and then they ask me how to see. Oh, Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound precocious. Super Cala Fragilistic, X P Aladocious.